Good evening. I'd like to call the City Council Meeting of Monday, April 3rd, 2023 to order. If I can have our city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
And Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Present.
And Councilmember Noble.
Here.
And Councilmember Dugo.
Here.
Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Busque.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which this stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving on to agenda approval. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Councilmember Noble. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. At this point in time, anybody from the public wish to make any comments on any agenda items, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, we're moving on to our special business. Today, we have a proclamation for National Autism Awareness Month. If I can have our city clerk, please read the proclamation into the record.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Green Acres proclaiming April 2023 as National Autism Awareness Month. Autism is a pervasive developmental disorder affecting the social, communication, and behavioral skills of those affected by it. While there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive early and intensive treatment throughout their lives, they lead considerably improved lives. Autism Florida is spearheading an awareness effort in order to educate parents, professionals, and the general public about autism and its effects. Therefore, the City of Green Acres proclaim April 2023 as National Autism Awareness Month and urge all employees and residents to participate in National Autism Awareness Month activities in order to become better educated about autism and create a better community for individuals with autism. Thank you.
And tonight, I present the proclamation to the micro-business specialist for the Else for Autism Foundation, Julie Labelle Abdallah.
Thank you very much. I don't know if it's a few words, but Michelle had asked me to give you an overview of some of the program services. I gotta put on my CNI dogs, okay? So it is a 26-acre campus with two education buildings. We have two individual Palm Beach County Public Charter Schools that are 501(c). It's a lottery system for enrollment and peer-to-peer match. They must have an IEP with a primary eligibility of ASD to enroll. We also have the Autism Project of Palm Beach County. It's another non-for-profit. It utilizes space in the upper school building, and they own the group home that lives in front of our campus. The facility is available for rentals. We have an auditorium, a conference room, a beautiful garden, and an amazing golf course. We have an advisory board, which is led by Merrick, and consisting of all individuals with ASD. We have an events department. The events department hosts anywhere between 20 to 30 events per year. The events department does more than just run fundraising events. They also coordinate fundraising and world autism awareness campaign with the help of our corporate sponsors. The CADDY program is for children under the age of seven years. Else for Autism Foundation's transparency is for a team of specialists include professionals in the areas of pediatric, neuropsychology, clinical psychology, special education, speech and language pathology, and applied behavior analysis. Our team is highly skilled professionals, provides a comprehensive evaluation report, which includes a profile of strengths and weaknesses, recommendations that can be used in development of treatment goals, and a formal diagnosis of ASD as applicable. Early intervention programs and services are designed to support development of social communication, play, and pre-academic readiness skills, unique strengths and learning opportunities presented to each child. All services are incorporated utilizing evidence-based practices and family involvement to support skill development and decrease the likelihood of challenging behaviors. Early, um, sorry, intensive behavior intervention is a comprehensive one-on-one behavior service provided in a classroom environment. We also have another service called Ruby Autism Network. It's a parent training program. It teaches parents to use applied behavior analysis techniques to manage your child's challenging behaviors and teach new skills. We provide speech and language therapy, provides individuals with the access to speech, language, and the means of communicating their wants, needs, thoughts, and feelings. We also have occupational therapy, which supports and promotes an individual's ability to participate in daily life activities, including play, leisure, social participation, and functional self-care, as well as facilitates development of fine motor, visual motor, integration, biolateral coordination, motor planning, and sensory processing. We also offer mental health counseling services, which are available to individuals and their families in need of mental health support. Individual and group counseling services are offered both in person and via telehealth. We also have SAM Stick Together. It's a virtual support group that meets monthly to address the needs of siblings of children with special needs and learning differences. Our Global Outreach Autism Learning Service, this program provides families with the world access to a highly qualified transdisciplinary team of professionals, meaning the speech pathologist, board-certified behavior analysts, music therapists, occupational therapists, who all work together to evaluate and enhance individualized programs for individuals with ASD using Train the Trainer coaching model. The Team for Else for Autism Foundation conducts research to assess methods, pediology, and techniques to improve social significant behaviors for individuals with autism spectrum disorder. Research topics include early identification and early intervention for young children with ASD, to use the recreation as a supplemental intervention for individuals with ASD, and the application of evidence-based intervention for adults on autism spectrum, sorry. The Teaching Education Autism Method programs offer internship, practice, experience, and professional opportunities across discipline and programs. So we do a little bit. So from there, I want to tell you about Cia Possibilities. That's my baby. So we appreciate being here. I stand very thankful. Thank you so much. So we also have an adult day training program, which is five days a week from nine to three. The program's overreaching goal is to foster fulfillment and growth for adults with autism. Through their participation in occupational industry, specific benchmark stations, to micro-business, and onsite apartment, and onsite VoC lab, clients can learn to practice a variety of pre-vocational vocational skills relating to different occupational fields, as well as continually engaging in daily activities. Okay, now it's my turn. So Cia Possibilities, I'm not gonna read it. I should know what I'm doing. I don't know. No, I can't. I can see you. So basically, to Cia Possibilities, everybody knows, if you want to raise your hand, I don't know if I can talk this long. March of 2020, COVID came, right? Does everybody remember? We want to forget it, right? So basically, what we did with the adults in our day program is we had the parents meet us at the beach, and we went around and we collected shells, sand, driftwood, and any other things like sea glass, shark's teeth, and what have you. And then we got picnic tables, and we got busy, and we started creating a variety of ocean-themed products. So the individuals in the day program, this is their micro-business called Cia Possibilities. And the program promotes more than just a leisure activity creating art. So I want to read off. I don't want to miss anything. So it's also design and development, staying on task, communication skills, community inclusion, money skills, motor skills, and vocational skills. And we do appreciate Green Acres, Michelle, for always inviting us to community events you have, we have, you all have, so we can be part of everything that is here for the City of Green Acres. Okay. I know, you should never ask me to talk, Michelle. Sure. Thank you so much.
All right. So this next item is something that I always enjoy every single year, especially when I start hearing some of the achievements that some of our youth have recorded. But today, we have the 2022 President's Volunteer Service Awards, and we have our youth program supervisor, Adam Mohammed, here to present the awards.
For the record, I'm not sure exactly who knows me, but I'm Adam Mohammed, Youth Program Supervisor. And just to give you a little bit of information about the program, the Presidential Volunteer Service Awards is approved by the President of the United States to recognize Americans of all ages who have made significant commitment to volunteer service. In 2005, the City of Green Acres became an approved official certifying organization for the President's Volunteer Service Awards. Volunteers who demonstrate outstanding volunteer service and/or civic participation can attain a volunteer service award. This year, we will recognize 29 volunteers for their service during the 2022 calendar year, six adults, which includes one family, which is a Glasser family, nine teens, and 14 young adults, totaling 9,011 hours. So that was everything on paper. Before I go ahead and distribute the awards, I just want to say personally, I'm a recipient of this award two times, and I will say it's definitely one award that I still have to this day. I love seeing the pin. I love seeing the recognition for this, and not just to mention, not for myself, but these youth who actually come take the time out of their days, every single day, to come volunteer youth programs and to be a part of their community and be a significant impact and a help, because sometimes they can be a handful, I will tell you that, but ultimately, I love seeing them every day, and they are such a great help, and just hats off to them. So thank you again for being here, and thank you to them. So first off, I have Ashley Flores. Wisnandi Chalot. Andrew Tudella. Gabriela Santos. Isabel Chavez. Calista Garcia. Cruz Chavez. Cassandra Soriano. Ashley Rosendes. Eileen DeArmas. Jennifer Cuellar. Amelia Mohammed. Juan Ramirez. Samuel Rojas. Jose Martinez. Edo Suarez. And Emilio Garcia.
All right. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Michelle Thompson, Director of Community and Recreation Services, and I have the privilege of announcing our adult volunteers. Three of them, or four of them, are not here, but I would like to call their names, if that's okay. We have Doreen Lawrence, Annette Stone, Palmyra Torres, and Annette is Palmyra's daughter, and then Cindy Jones. They do tremendous work at our Little Free Libraries and at our community events. And we have a very, very special award for Bob and Carol Glasser. Last year, they got the family award in a gold medal. This year, they are getting a silver medal for all of their volunteer work and their extreme generosity, which is incredible. They probably fund all of our new books. We have an arsenal of about 4,000 stockpiled right now, and Carol, I think, keeps many, many at her home, because she knows we're running out of space. She also helps fund our Little Free Libraries, and she does all of the books for all of our community events, as well as some toys that we give away as well. And then I think Adam wants to add to that.
And I usually don't get to speak to Ms. Carol and Mr. Bob, because they're such generous people, but they're so humble. They don't, they're not the faunest of receiving awards, so we really had to pull their chain to get them here today. So I just wanted to let them know that we appreciate you, because without them, our kids might not be getting eggs for Easter. You know, they went out their way to purchase eggs, to purchase stuff to stuff those eggs, and to provide that opportunity specific to youth programs, kids. Whenever there's something we need, she tells us one thing, just send an Amazon list. Don't tell me anything else. And that's all she ever wants to know, and she's always quick. If there's any, if there's a box that comes damaged, she will send it back, and she's going to tell them she needs a new one. And I'll tell you right now, I have never met such humble people, because they will, they don't want any recognition, but I have to say, we appreciate you. We do see you, and thank you.
All right.
So before I proceed, I'm going to speak to the young people in the room. First of all, thank you for volunteering and stepping up and being leaders amongst your peers. It may not seem like it, but believe it or not, you guys are leaders. Just by sheer volunteering and choosing to help your fellow students, the other youth that we have in the program, by being a role model, you're leaving a small imprint in our community, and we're truly thankful for what you do. So thank you so much for volunteering, for stepping up. For those of you that are still in the program, are going to continue to volunteer, get your friends to do it. You are learning skills that half of our society won't ever experience. So thank you so much for stepping up, for leading, and we truly appreciate it. So on behalf of the City of Green Acres, thank you. And I wanted to say a few thank yous to our great role models that just walked out, but they have done so much for this community, and we're truly thankful. They always step up, and very similar to what Adam said, they don't look for thank yous or anything like that. They truly do it because they care about our community. So we're truly thankful to have amazing people in our backyard. So thanks to them. All right, now we're now, we're moving on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Councilmember Diaz. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. Moving on to our regular agenda, today we have ordinance for 2023-05, first reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance into the record.
Ordinance 2023-05, first reading, amending the City of Green Acres budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, and ending September 30th, 2023, inclusive providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
And today, we have our Director of Finance, Terry Berger, presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I know I've been here before this year for a budget adjustment. This is the second time. I can't say it won't be the last, but with the prices going crazy. Ordinance 202304 is a budget adjustment for fund several of our CIP projects. So what, the first one is with the 301 Fund. And we have, you have just approved the grant for Safe Street that did have a variance of $50,000 for the city. So that is within the budget adjustments. Also, we have Tylo Inogov for $24,000, and we have EOC, which we want to start on that EOC. We don't want to lag. So we want to get started on that. So we have allocated $50,000 to start on that. We've purchased the land, and now this is going to start the next leg. We also have project 304, and we have a copier for $15,000. No copiers were budgeted this year, and this is a need. The next one was also 305 for $90,000. This project is for Doorman Road. There's a delay in this project, which the delay will cost us $90,000. There is a potential of some additional grant funding, but we can't lock in on that right now. So the total budget adjustment is $229,000, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 202305.
Are there any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve ordinance 202305 on first reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. Thank you so much, Terry. Moving on to our board appointments for Scholarship Committee. Tonight, we are looking to reappoint Ms. Roxanna Hunt Gale, regular member, to serve three-year term, and appointing Ms. Shalana Brown, regular member, and Ms. Waldine Pierre, alternate member, to serve a three-year term. Oh, sorry, City Manager McQ.
Nope, that, you, perfect. You don't need me. That's perfect. Perfect, yep.
Anything that you want to add?
No, we just, we had some expiring members, and a couple of the current members did advise that they didn't wish to continue to serve. Thankfully, we had some interested residents that, one, we had an application from a year ago, the other one recently applied, so we're excited to add them to that committee. So we are requesting reappointment of Ms. Roxanna Hunt Gale, and then the new appointments of Shalana Brown and Waldine Pierre.
Excellent. Do I have a motion from the council?
Motion to approve the board appointment for the Scholarship Committee.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Diaz, second by Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. All right, tonight, we have the appointment of the Deputy Mayor. As you may have remembered, last year, we had brought it back up for, we brought up a procedure to rotate the Deputy Mayor on an annual basis starting on April 1st. According to my calculations, I believe the next person that will be, the Deputy Mayor will be Councilmember Noble. With that being said, do I need, do we need an official motion, or since we already created the rule?
Technically, an official motion is not required, as the ordinance outlines the procedure and process with which appointment happens. It's just a matter of just the formality of acknowledging the outgoing Deputy Mayor, acknowledging the incoming Deputy Mayor.
Excellent. Since no, since no motion is needed, we want to thank our former Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Tharp, for everything that you have done in your term, and we welcome Councilmember Noble as a new Deputy Mayor. Congratulations, Councilmember, oh, Deputy Mayor Noble. I will apologize in advance if I call you Councilmember Noble. I will apologize. So it takes me about two or three meetings. All right, any comments, Council, Deputy Mayor Noble, that you want to add?
No, I just want to say thank you. A pleasure to be Deputy Mayor. I was once Deputy Mayor early in my 21-year career that I have here with the city, and so it's wonderful to be back and look forward again to keeping this city a wonderful city, financially solidly sound, and to see these young people who are potential leaders of our city here. It's just a pleasure to be involved as Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
Excellent. And the departing Deputy Mayor, want to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. It was an honor to serve the past two years, and Mr. Mayor, I still hold the record for the shortest meeting the past two years.
The last meeting was shorter.
Eighteen minutes. I'm not keeping track, not keeping score, though.
We want to know, eighteen minutes. I have to know that.
I don't know if that's a record we want to brag about, but okay. Moving on to our next item, our discussion items. There are none tonight. Comments from the public for agenda, for non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Chris Arbor. I represent Green Acres Bowl, 6126 Lake Worth Road. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the council collectively. I would also like to thank our city manager and her staff. They're amazing. I just want to thank you guys for the years of service.
We will be reaching out to some of our local businesses to hopefully, you know, be a part of that as well and see if there's any interest there, but it was just, it was really nice to be able to be a part of that with those students and just see all the good things that they're doing, and sometimes don't really get the recognition for all that they're doing, so it was a great meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for the city manager? Nope. All right, moving on to our city attorney's report, Attorney Tercivia.
No report, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, moving on to the mayor and city councils' report. I'm going to start with our new deputy mayor, Deputy Mayor Tharp. Noble, oh my God, I knew this was going to happen.[1343.12][1343.12](LAUGHING).
Thank you. Just to repeat part of what I said earlier, it was an honor to see these young people here. I look at them and I see the future leaders of the city. I hope they know we helped them and that they should in turn, for future generations, help the future generations. We have a wonderful city. It should, with the right attitude and determination and leadership, we will continue to have a beautiful city that we're all enjoying. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tharp?
No report.
Councilmember Dugo?
No reports.
Councilmember Diaz?
Two quick things, just a quick thank you to Ms. Skidmore and her team, as well as the Chase team, for the lovely employee picnic last week. It was, it was nice to see everybody getting together, and the weather was ideal. And then just briefly, I did have the opportunity to tour the new Garcia High School, and it is a wonderful facility. The majority of the students that will be going there will be Green Acres students. I do suggest, if you all have the time, reach out to Principal Otero, he is more than, he welcomes the opportunity to show the school and everything that it's going to be offering, so thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Busque?
Nothing.
All right, for the mayor's report, I know that we will be hosting the next League of Cities luncheon here, so I look forward to the council being there, as we always open up our doors, I believe it's in every April, so looking forward to hosting that event. On Thursday, I'm going to be doing the Career Day at Choli Lakes Elementary, so that's always, that's always a great event to go and share with our youth about what we do, and hopefully, one of them will be the next mayor, and, well, not the next mayor, but there'll be a future mayor in 20 years, so. Chris, thank you for the kind words. We love that you're in the city. You're one of the, you're one of the reasons people come to Green Acres, and we're extremely proud of what you do for the community, so it's great that you have received that, that grant, and hopefully, we can continue to expand upon that grant so that we can continue to enhance the city in helping the small business owners be able to achieve that, and not only the small business owners, but residents alike, so thank you for the kind words. I think that speaks volumes, and hopefully, we can expand that project in the future. That concludes the mayor's report. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.[1517.82][1517.82](APPLAUSE).